Welcome to an abridged version of the Scarborough zoning board of fields. There are no appeals tonight, but we are going to be discussing the new changes that have gone into effect with the zoning and also how that impacts the board and any half way forward. So you might enjoy listening to it. I'm wearing a hat and I'm not super hours and you don't want to see my hair. You guys just don't look good. Let me just go a quick roll.
I can do any more. Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Loizelle?
Here.
Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Hebert?
Here.
And Mr. Blaze?
Here.
You got it right at Blaze.
Yeah. Sorry, I had a green screen there.
Sometimes you want to put that on.
It's just not on my list.
They've actually mentioned.
We have Mike right there, so it should be picked up. We don't hear it amplified, but.
Did you say Mr. Crockett not here?
Uh, Mr. Crockett.
Not here.
Okay.
And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Before you do that, Mr. Chair, point of order, can we approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Do we have the minutes?
We do.
I didn't send that package because I was in Congress.
Would you like to see them?
Okay, do I have a motion on the minutes?
Yes, make the motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Discussion? The new guy?
The new guy.
All right, actually the older guy.
Exactly.
He did the same thing I did, he went through council, then he came back.
I'm not going to say it.
So, am I going to just step around?
First item on the agenda was the withdrawal of.
That's a formal withdrawal at this point?
It's a formal withdrawal of, and I don't have the appeal number.
It's twenty, yeah, twenty-five fifty-eight.
Yes. So, we have a letter from Catherine Joyner, who was a designer for the Barber property.
And that was the one, the garage?
One Cliff Street, yeah, garage. That was tabled for further information. And also because of the error that I made on the calculation of building area versus lot area. And so I found the right answer to that, I informed the appellant, and so they've withdrawn their application. So, I set that up.
We don't have any other applications upstate?
We don't have any other.
And new rules, new procedures out, we're going to put a deadline on them.
Yes.
The town council has not made a change yet.
We haven't made a change yet. It's a point of order that we're going to discuss, we've got it on the agenda to discuss with the town council amongst some other procedural matters, which includes the extension from six months to a year for any appeals that you prove. Time frame on them will be good for a year.
We talked about that a while ago, just to remind you, let's be real. We're finding that a lot of people, because of the weather, because of getting help, getting work done.
Economy.
Economy, it's taking longer than six months before they can break ground once they get approved. And so they're having to come back for.
For extensions.
Extensions, and we're just gathering them through. And rather than doing that, give them a year, but no extension.
This is for a building permit?
Correct.
Once we approve.
Once we approve a variance, if they don't get started within six months, if they don't come and get their building permit and get started.
So it's just for variance?
It would just be for those variance approvals.
How about regular building permits?
The regular building permit is for six months. And that's another issue that we've got to look at, whether or not we want to have, it has nothing to do with the zoning board. But I feel six months is a little tight, but there are others in our department that don't agree with me, so that's a discussion that doesn't really involve you guys. But regardless of that, we can still issue an extension to that six month period, it's right in the ordinance that we can do that.
Do we have the ability to say that they have to file for a building permit within six months of when we approve and then it would tick out at the same time at twelve months? Because then it would start the six month clock on the.
It's an interesting issue.
Yeah, I don't want to muddy the waters too much.
Okay.
Because one of the other elements is that because of the beaches, certain beaches Higgins has kind of an unwritten code that you don't do construction in the summertime.
Right.
I don't know if it's as strict down at Pine Point or not.
I believe they bring it up the same way.
They're pretty good about it.
But I know that's a problem, people can't get, because of that sort of moratorium on construction through the summer months, that often plays havoc with that six month timeframe.
And then you get the weather.
So, as far as building permit, I don't know if we're going to change that or not, but it's a little different. If they get their, if they come in the winter months and they get their approval, you know, anytime during the winter months, they don't have to apply for a building permit right away. They can time that so that, you know, they can fit that six months within that twelve month timeframe.
Right.
And not be playing one against the other as much. So we may not do anything with the building permit, we may just allow that twelve month period. And it's just, it's just a convenience thing so that you don't have to come back and put it on the agenda and they don't have to show up, you know.
It just seems to make sense. And it's not, doesn't cover things like the occupancy, if it's an in-home occupation, it doesn't cover things like that.
Right.
But it'd be strictly for something that's involved with the building structure and all the other.
They still have to record their variance within ninety days when they receive it, that still has to be done. So, you know, it's covered in other statutory ways, but it just seems like that six month timeframe, they're either fighting the timeframe for the building permit or the timeframe for the variance.
They're also dealing with the state and sometimes with the.
DEPA.
DEPA and dummy corps and all that stuff.
So, you know, and a lot of times their design isn't completely done until they know they can actually do the projects, you know, so they haven't spent all the money on the design, so they may need another month or two to finalize some of those plans after they know they've gotten their variance to actually put the building where they want to put it.
Yeah. I think it's consistent with what we've been trying to do is work with people.
So, and I forget how we got on that topic, but.
Just you talking about the council and some of the issues of whether or not they're being at fault.
Right. So, we'll have, hopefully by the next meeting I'll have a little more guidance for you on how that's going to work or if we're going to go that way. But we do have some other procedural issues that we're going to talk about, make sure that we get those straightened around and hope to do it next week. And just as other, before we get started on the Higgins Beach thing, I think Karen sent you all an email with the schedule, the zoning board meetings on it, so you should, if you haven't seen it yet, it should be in your inbox.
And you got one, you put one change after that, right?
There was a change, she had to change the May twelfth, the May meeting to May twelve, which is a Thursday night.
I'll show them.
When did that, when did that go up, Brian?
Today.
Okay.
Email, not sent. Just know that it's there and also we have, we have two new board members. We have Karen Shoup is going to be our first alternate and of course we welcome back Ed Blaze, who served on the board I guess some years ago, I'm not exactly sure when that was it, but you've been busy on the council and doing some other things too in the meantime.
Right.
So, welcome.
Is he coming back in one position, is he coming back as a?
He's coming back as a full voting member. And so I believe, because Mr. Loizelle was terming out and did come and join us tonight and I appreciate that, he was going to serve until we fill those positions. So Karen Shoup will be appointed on the twentieth, I believe, the next council.
The twentieth.
Yep. So, we still, we still have an alternate, a second alternate.
Well, he would still stay on that.
He could stay on us.
Yeah, he's still on.
No, wait a minute. How about Mike? Got it, you got, that's the one.
Well, that's right, yeah, I guess we got to figure that out.
Before you. Does he show up as a voting member, does he show on the list of the voting members?
He's not on the list, this is the list that Tody Justice, the town clerk, sent me and I asked her about Mr. Richard.
Decided not to. Yep.
That is bizarre, Brian, that really is bizarre.
And Karen may be second alternate and I may be off the board.
What we can do is, I'll talk with Tody tomorrow.
I think she took you off, did I ask you that? You said you didn't know if you were from the back, you might not have shown it on.
Oh, you said something to her?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
It was me. I know what it means because someone who asked, how come you weren't on the list?
No, it was me. Did she ask? It was a cold conversation, I was thinking, well, I haven't talked to her in three years.
I'll make a note, don't leave any.
Yeah, I told Riley at the meeting that was named.
So, the voting members now are.
Let's just get awkward.
Myself, Stark, and Blaze.
Mr. Richard, if he gets back on the line here, it's Crockett. And you're going to be second alternate.
Oh, no, I'm out now.
No, because it's still seven.
No, no, there isn't, I'm gone now. One, two, three, four, five, six, Karen is seven.
That's fine, Mark. I think he's got you. He's better than I am.
I have a full house. You have two pair.
Well, he's only gone for a few months.
Exactly.
True.
But it doesn't mean I'm not going to come to each meeting just to like monitor.
He'll be back, he'll be back, he'll be back, he'll be back.
For the record.
I think that'd be great.
For the record, given the fact this probably is, in that case, probably going to be the last meeting, isn't it?
Yeah.
We need to really congratulate you and thank you for the work you've done. You have a great chair, you did a great job. He's getting a plaque for you.
Clearly you never saw any of the videos. When you were there.
No, I just want mine.
If I would have been more prepared, I would have had that for tonight, but we'll make a special presentation if you can make the next meeting, we'd love you to come.
I don't know, I've got a big, big schedule.
Oh, wow, it's already full.
But it's important, because you know something that makes a difference? You've spent nine years, nine years on this board, every month, barely missing any, traveling back and forth, sometimes three hours from.
Three and three quarters from Woodland?
From Woodland.
Yeah.
To come to me, you've been such a great, dedicated member and you would be re-upping his, that comes up, so that's good.
What?
No.
You didn't know he was already sitting on the ballot?
No.
He's already got it right down to the day.
Okay.
So now, when we found out we didn't really have much on the agenda tonight, I asked around, everybody thought they'd like to get a little more information on the new town Scarborough Higgins Beach, Higgins Beach Care for Bates zoning district.
It's official now?
It is official, it was adopted and approved by council. It has been, it was effective immediately, so it's in effect now.
Does that mean that lady can build a house there?
In fact, we just did our first review.
You can ask it.
It was for twelve Thespur Street. And after a couple of three more tries, they were able to get something that met the standards.
Excellent.
That's good news.
Yeah, which is kind of where we sent them right from the start.
They only went five tries? They only went five or six tries coming back to you?
I lost track.
The good news is they're getting what they want and it matches what the town expects.
Right.
So, good.
So, Mark had emailed me today and kind of had some suggestions on how he thought this might best benefit the board. And I talked a little bit to Ed about it before the meeting as well. And rather than like walk you through every detail of the new ordinance, I'll get some of the basics, some of the high points, it's there, you all have a copy of it to read and digest and at any point if you have questions, shoot me an email, give me a call, we talk about it. I don't want to go into all of the weeds of it, but what I want to try to concentrate on is how does this affect you and the way you do your business?
The truth is the stuff on the backside doesn't affect us. If it doesn't, most of that there doesn't affect us because it'll be done on the backside. So the question is what, what in there does it affect the futures?
Right.
As opposed to what we'll never see.
Yeah, what you might see in typical variances to this new ordinance, height, width, depth.
Yeah, and flexibility.
So if everybody's okay with that, that's kind of where we'll focus, I don't want to, I don't want to have this be a long thing going out, I think we can cover it in less than an hour and be done with it and you may think of other questions and things as you go along.
Excuse me.
My door's always open, you know where I am. So, let's just start by saying what used to be mostly R-four district in the old zoning ordinance and some R-three is now split into two different zones, really primarily one zone with a second zone that covers some of the commercial buildings that are down there, it's really kind of spot zoning.
Is it overlay, or is it?
I'm going to, let me bring up a map.
You said the word spot zoning?
I did utter those words.
Wow.
Yes, I did. Let's see, do I have that? I don't think I've got it, I think it's on the website, I didn't bring it up yet.
Well, I know what the four items are. The four items are the market at the end of Ocean Avenue. Right. Higgins Beach Inn, Breakers, and the clubhouse. Now, there is an apartment that is going to remain an apartment building, but it's going to be, that lot is going to remain a residential lot, I believe.
How many units does that have, apartment building? Seven in there, is that seven, Ed? Seven apartments?
Yeah, whatever it is.
Is that your own?
Pardon?
Your own?
Yeah. Okay, so what you're seeing up on the screen, whichever screen is most convenient for you to look at, you see these coastal mixed use districts that points to this darker brown area and then the darker brown area down here, which I believe is the Breakers. And then there, as Ed said, this is the market up on Spur Link. And was there one other place? Oh, there's two lots, there's the hotel lot and the lot we decided.
Is it the parking lot?
That's the clubhouse, isn't it?
Doesn't look like it. Is the clubhouse right there?
It is, I believe.
So, so those are the only mixed use districts, the rest of it is all coastal, coastal residential district one. So, it basically, that encompasses almost everything that was R-four. So we just changed it because we didn't want to change the R-four district to match it, so we created these two new zones to deal with. That won't have, you know, that won't be anything that you'll be probably dealing with too much. And back to the code, so here's your coastal residential and the intent, purpose, so on and so forth, the permitted building types are listed there and building standards are in Article Three, which we'll get to in a moment. Your lot dimensions now, instead of talking about minimum lot area, which you're more familiar with, we simply have minimum and maximum width and depth. And we made it forty-eight feet minimum width because of the geometry, most of the lots are, the majority of the lots are fifty by a hundred, but sometimes the geometry doesn't work out so that they actually have fifty feet of frontage, if you look at the survey plan, it's like forty-nine point five. So we made it forty-eight to make sure it was safe enough to get most of those fifty foot plus or minus wide lots.
This is on both, both of the zones?
It is on both of the zones, I believe, good question, yes. Yeah, that same minimum lot width on both of the zones. I think it may be that some of the mixed uses are probably on lots that are bigger than that, but the idea was that those are grandfathered and so they can continue to do the things that they're doing. We didn't want to make a large lot because we didn't want people combining lots to do a mixed use type thing. So, we're trying to make it more uniform and consistent and actually do away with people combining lots to do bigger development and make it more in the style of the fifty by one hundred Higgins Beach lots.
Does this have any effect on some of the two houses on one lot situations we?
It may. It may. We'll see how that all plays out, I don't know how many of those there are, there are a few. There are also some that have developed on one lot and had a combined other lot that was empty that they couldn't do anything with because of the lot standards that were in place at the time, which didn't allow for a forty-eight foot wide street range. So now they can separate and split them and it's actually going to be maybe two or three new lots created because of that. It won't be a lot, but there will be a few.
Wow, so aren't there some lots down here that are a hundred feet?
There are some that are combined already.
So that, so if it's more than ninety-eight feet, it's not going to?
Yeah, and we did that on purpose. That's so people wouldn't combine, so you can uncombine now, but we don't want people combining together. And so.
Can you walk me through that? If I buy a house and it's in my name.
Yeah.
And I buy another house right beside it, it's in my name.
Don't they automatically merge?
For tax purposes.
I thought it was state regulations.
If they're non-conforming lots.
Only if they're non-conforming.
But if they've both been developed, no. If one of those lots is undeveloped and non-conforming, then it does get a sort of, but if they've both got houses on them, they're not one lot anymore. So they didn't separately develop.
Okay, thanks.
So, what you're going to see in the ordinance now, we talked a little bit about the lot dimensions, the thing that you guys will be most dealing with, I think, or will relate most to what you do, is you're familiar with the fifteen foot side setback, the fifteen foot rear setback, and I think for the most part thirty foot front setbacks on the front properties. We now have a primary front setback, and this is for corner lots, we have a primary front setback and the secondary front setback, which happen to be the same, we don't distinguish between them, but we do, we do give them the ability to designate what their primary front.
Yeah.
And so now, for the principal building placement, whoops, that's the, I'm in the coastal district, I want to go back to the residential because that's what you're going to see most. The primary front setback is eighteen feet minimum, okay, to twenty-one feet maximum. Or we used to try to shove them back to thirty feet or as far back as is practical, now we're actually saying we don't want you any further back in the street than twenty-one. And that is to try to preserve those backyards that we were forcing people to build back into, which was closing up view corridors and all kinds, creating all kinds of problems that were not consistent with the development pattern out there. So now we're bringing them back to the street in more historic development patterns of Higgins Beach, that's with the primary dwelling, the primary building, which is the box, the main part of your house.
Include the porch or no?
I'll get to that.
Okay.
Good question. So, so the primary or principal building is the main box of the house. So you locate that, let's just say you locate that at that eighteen foot minimum distance from your front property line and you can also locate it a minimum of eight feet from your side property line. This will, this is one of the impacts that you guys will feel the most for a lot of, whether it's, whether it's a tear down, rebuild project, or maybe it's one of those lot splits that will happen where no, no building has existed maybe for years and years, maybe never, they will now be able to build a house eight feet from the property line. It used to be fifteen. So there will be a ton of variance requests that won't ever, you won't ever have to look at that you used to have to look at all the time, almost in every case.
And the neighbors are comfortable with that event?
Through the public meetings, the comments that we got, almost everybody was in favor of reducing those setbacks because it made sense now. And what it also allows you to do is if you can squeeze that up to eight feet on one side, it creates a driveway and parking area on the other side. It doesn't allow you to fill that whole space with houses.
Only one side, you're saying, yep.
But it can be either side.
But if you go one side, that makes sense.
Now, the fire department doesn't have an issue if the two, the property and the adjacent property both choose.
Excellent question, Mr. Loizelle, this is why we need you so badly. Any structure, any dwelling that is built closer than fifteen feet to the property line, in accordance with our ordinances and our fire department's regulations, will have to be built with fire rated material.
Like a garage versus a house. Enter alert. A one-hour burn or two-hour burn.
It's fire rated material. We're not going to specify what fire rated material, they're going to look at the flame spread rating and.
So it might be the.
The one that comes to mind is.
We're going back to that sentence.
Cementitious, warts, dense glasses material that's used quite frequently. And the other thing is they don't vent the soffits, they're hard soffits. So there's some construction concerns that you have to deal with because now you've lost some ventilation for your attic and you have to do it a different way. But that's, that's to prevent fire from entering that structure that's closer than fifteen feet. Why fifteen feet? Because the NFPA fire codes deal with buildings that are closer than thirty feet from each other, okay? So if you had fifteen feet and fifteen, that's one of the reasons why we had the fifteen foot setback, that puts structures thirty feet from each other. On the front, on the street side, you've got the street protected, nobody can build on the street, so you're fine there. If there's public land or common land that you can't build on, you'd be fine there. But wherever there's possibly a dwelling existing, in most cases, there is going to be a dwelling exist if you tear down and rebuild a house, we're going to be looking at that fire rated material, doesn't mean the other house has to be fire rated, but you do. And we also look at window placement to try to make sure that glass isn't right across from glass.
Good.
So there will be some concerns, that won't be your concerns, but there'll be our concerns, but you need to know about that. So that's one of the things we'll be looking at and we won't even look at that necessarily at the administrative review process, which I'll get to in a minute, a new wrinkle in the whole thing. We'll look at that at the time we're looking at the building permit and application. So, good question, and yes. So, so we have the primary setback now and we also have a secondary front setback, that's, that was the one, I was wondering, I was on the other zone. So in the residential zone, on your secondary front, if you're a corner lot, you get to be twelve feet. So that's a big change because we used to require two identical frontages, I thought that was the case.
Used to be.
Right. So you had to be thirty feet from Bayview and thirty feet from Ocean, you know.
Which basically gave you a.
Yeah, you know, on a fifty by one hundred lot, you're done.
And when the applicant comes to us, if the address, it goes by the address of the primary, so when they say?
Generally speaking, generally speaking, I would say yes, that's a kind of a fine detail that I'm not a hundred percent sure about. I would not want to bet that every house is oriented to their street address, in other words, clearly the front of the house may not actually be on the street where their address is.
Okay.
So they may have the option to say, even though my address is here, the front of my house is here, this is my primary.
Right, because you did say that they would have the. Right, because you did say that they would have the option to choose what their primary and secondary is.
That's, that's the way I'm interpreting it. And again, it's, there's still a lot of questions I have about this. So I, I don't stand here pretending to know all the answers.
I think it's great he's taking an honorary out.
Uh, and it'll be a learning process, uh, as we go. But my, my interpretation is yes, you do get to choose, but it's gotta make sense. Obviously, if it doesn't look like the front of your house, then it's probably not your primary frontage. If, if, if the, clearly the front of your house is the address side of your house, I don't think we have any questions there. It's, it's solved.
And anybody buying a property where that's already been established, they can change it? Some guy comes in the, in the future and buys that and says, I don't want that. I wanna move the house this way. He can change that?
I think it would be possible, yeah. I don't see why that would be a big issue. Again, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I, I think that's the intent.
Okay.
You get to have a primary and a secondary.
And if you choose you want it the other way and you're gonna rip the building down and you can do it the other way?
Right.
Now, you're, you're going to provide them opportunities to make decisions? Or you'll be making decisions for them at times?
Uh, it's, I think it's a pretty interactive process. We're not gonna be just sitting here dictating what's gonna happen.
You're approaching, like you have a...
Yeah, they're gonna have these, they're gonna have a, in fact, we've created a checklist, a self-checklist for the applicant just for the design review phase of this, not even getting the building permit yet, just trying to navigate this ordinance. So there's all of these little nuances now that there never used to be, and we're providing them that checklist so that they go down through and we cite the ordinance where you can find that information.
So they're really, you're really forcing them to make all the decisions within specific parameters?
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much. We give them the...
Therefore, they can't come back to the zoning board of appeal and question any of the decisions that you guys made?
Well, that's not necessarily true. The zoning board of appeals does exist for the purpose of administrative appeals. If somebody feels that we have judged in error, they, you guys serve as that second sounding board for that. And that's, that's...
That's happened a couple of times.
Yeah, and I mean, that's...
Well, do you, do you see that as a potential?
I don't, I don't think you're gonna see that any more than you have with any other part of our zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
It's, it's never been, yeah, I, I can think of two or three in the last ten years, maybe even longer, and they weren't on issues like this. They weren't on a debate of what you could or couldn't do, it was on, you need to clean up your backyard.
And I think, I think one of the good things, and in fact, the review that we did with the twelve-vestal lot, which we just did the week before, I think it was in between Christmas and New Year's is when we, we actually did it and wrote the, wrote the findings and said, yeah, you finally made it. Uh, there were a few things that were sort of like, wow, not really sure, you know? But we, we rationalized it, we negotiated with the designer, we came to some middle ground, and we felt it met the intent of the ordinance. Because the ordinance, there are still some things in the ordinance that sort of don't nail it right down. So it's up for interpretation. So we try to, we try to figure out what was the intent and what makes sense. And, and I expect we'll find those things from time to time. And we're making lists of those things and we will try to better define and refine and kinda get it.
The bigger challenge might be that they don't follow what they say they're gonna do. And I think that's gonna be where we're gonna get into some issues.
Well, and that's, you bring up a good point. One of the discussions we had is, you know, we've got, we've got two full-time code enforcement officers who are not gonna be a part of this administrative review because they've got other things to do. So there's, there's gonna be probably three of us, the town planner, myself, and the commercial fire and building inspector for the fire rating issues and some of those other things. So the three of us will probably be doing these reviews. The two guys that'll be going out and inspecting won't know what we've all agreed to here and written down necessarily. They won't be intimately familiar. So I'm gonna end up probably doing most inspections on these at least short-term.
But shouldn't this stuff show up on the drawings?
It, it should, but you still gotta verify it.
True.
You know, like for example, there, we'll get into some of this stuff. Again, I don't wanna get too far into the weeds, but I'll hit on some of this stuff. There are things like setbacks for dormers. There has to be so much...
Is it three feet or?
Actually, four feet on the ends of the edge of the roof. So, I mean, that has to be field verified. It can show it on the plans, but you know how it works when you get in the field and people are...
When you're doing that from the four-foot point, just...
Let's not, let's not get into that right now, okay? Let's, let's keep pushing forward. Otherwise, I don't wanna make this any longer than this. But I wanna give you the basics and then talk about the types of variances that you'll see. But anyway, so, so first important point, variable setbacks, okay? And much smaller setbacks, both frontage and side. So, so again, that will limit or reduce the number of variance appeals that you guys should have to hear when you stop and think about the variances that you have heard. It's almost always involving a front setback or a side setback.
Will these variants of limited reductions that eliminate?
You, you guys are very honest and you got great questions. Some of the same questions I have that I don't have answers to. The limit, the way I look at it right now, our limited reduction of yard size variance is an option. Even in the shoreline zone, it's an option. You can't get it for the shoreline setback, but you could get it for a side setback or anything that isn't regulated by DEP or some other entity. It's available to every residential lot in Scarborough.
And prior to nineteen seventy?
Well, well, no. If, if it qualifies, if it meets the standards, in other words, I think the house has to be there prior to July third, nineteen ninety-one. Okay, that's the cutoff date. Anything built after ninety-one doesn't apply. So first thing, you got, you do have some older homes down there that would qualify, whether or not they're going to be doing a project where that is actually what they can use because it doesn't apply if you tear it down and rebuild. You can't use a limited reduction of yard size because you've now, you've taken the grandfathered structure and wiped it off the face of the earth.
But if it burned down, didn't they, could it?
Uh... If it burns down, according to our ordinance, you can build it back in its same footprint within twelve months. So there's no need to get a limited reduction of yard size at that point.
So essentially, people would wanna leave that one wall up?
That's, that's where you might find it, uh, if they, but, but because of the reduced setbacks, I don't think that they now have a very good argument for the, one of the, the criteria in that. You know what I mean? I think we've reduced setbacks enough and we've allowed for that secondary structure, that accessory structure, which we'll get to right now. If you look at the accessory structure, under lot standards, you have principal building and accessory building placement. The primary front setback for the accessory building is forty feet. So you're, you're back on the lot, forty feet. Your rear setback is three feet. So you can really tuck that accessory shed or garage or whatever, you can really tuck that back into the corner of the lot.
Almost treat them like a fence.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, and that's how a lot of them were built in the first place. They were built right up against the line or very close to it, really tucked them back in there. And that created a little privacy in the backyard.
And are there elevation requirements on the accessory unit? So you're not taking away the visual acuity through that?
There, uh, there, um, that's a great question. Uh, I don't think we...
Power.
But I think we, we, we limit them to the number of stories they can be.
So somebody's got a two and a half story, you can have a two and a half story exit.
Uh, no, no.
Yeah, 'cause that was the benefit of moving the building in the front, to the front of the lot. Now, if we let them build big out back, you've taken any visual line behind the house out again. It's just like filling the whole lot again.
One-story outbuilding, one-story carriage.
There you go, perfect.
The carriage house, you can see the one-story, you have to go back to the definition of story. It could actually be a one and a half.
Because you have attic. You could use that space underneath the roof.
Yeah.
What is that? Is that height wise, is that eighteen feet?
Uh, I don't know.
You go from the middle of the roof line, is that what it is?
Yeah, let's not, don't, don't ask too many questions.
Well, I can just, I see your point, make an A-frame out of it and...
Well, I'll, I'll get to that. I'll get to that. Don't jump ahead.
Sorry.
We're never gonna get through this. Never.
See, we're here to challenge you.
That's what we're doing.
Should we get on?
You know, if you just show up, you challenge me.
Are private homeowners still allowed in this, in this zone?
Uh, yep. Yep, theoretically, they could be, yeah. Yep. Um, so let's, let's, let's continue from where I...
We figured we got thoroughly confused. You don't know where you are anyway.
Uh...
He's rough.
Yeah. Yeah, how come he's not getting that?
Oh, yeah. And I could be raised.
He's probably thinking the same thing right now.
He's saying why doesn't he get it?
Finally, he's not shooting at me. I kinda like it.
Um, okay, so accessory buildings have their own standards. You understand that. And they, again, they're reduced as well, the setbacks. So here's another issue that you've probably dealt with before, accessory buildings, garages, you know, those types of things. So there's, you know, we've already eliminated about eighty-five percent of the variance appeal that you guys have heard in the beach communities over the last ten years.
And you don't see that three-foot being a huge problem with neighbors?
They don't think, because they went, this is all, this is all vetted out by them. It was really designed by the neighbors.
We went based on the public input that we got as was a part of that process. Um, was everybody happy? No. You know, you want, you expect everybody to be happy? It's never gonna happen.
Right.
But the majority of the people spoke and this was what they were...
They were okay with it.
Because it, you know, there are a few that wanna push the envelope and they're not so married to the character of the Higgins Beach. They don't really know what the character is. They have been there that long, for whatever reason. But there's a lot of longtime residents down there, the property owners down there, who really feel the character was going away. And that's why we didn't just deal with building setbacks. We dealt with the character issues too. Because you can't just take a two and a half-story, three-story structure and plop it eight feet from the property line and expect everybody to like it.
You remember this, this goes all the way back to Terry Dewan. Remember Terry Dewan, the, one of the architects that did a lot of work with the, uh, moving those houses up closer to...
Oh, the two separate houses that were...
No, this is a, he was an architect. He did a lot of the work for the town earlier for a while. He was doing a lot of stuff, uh, just the more vision, um, vision planning. I don't think, he was an architect of some type, but he did a lot of stuff.
Well, that's what, you know, that's what these guys helped, helped with too. And we did a lot of, which do you like kind of things, you know? They showed them different examples and so the, the groups that participated chose what they felt best represented.
It was a, a very, very interesting process. For the, for the people that lived down there, uh, it was extremely thorough. I mean, they walked around the neighborhood as a group and discussed different things.
Left their holsters at home.
So, so will everybody always be happy? No, but we think, you know, this, this came from the feedback we got. And so for those that aren't happy, I'm sorry, this is what you got because the majority spoke. This is what you got.
I, I didn't, I intentionally did not get involved with it because I don't, it doesn't involve us. But I, hearing you went to a lot of meetings, hearing about the meetings, hearing the dialogue, hearing you talk about it, everything I've heard, you went to a few, you went to a couple.
I was, I went to cover.
So, so the other thing we did in this district that I think is important, it doesn't directly impact you folks, is we, we also took some time to do coastal development districts, okay? So we have a shoreline overlay and we put in there what some of the major things that you have to deal with in the shoreline are. So under, uh, this is still under Article three coastal overlay zones. We, we talk about shoreline. If you're within seventy-five feet from the resource or if you're within seventy-five to two, uh, if you're more than seventy-five but less than two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the resource, we have two sort of separate things that you need to worry about. Inside of seventy-five feet, you're dealing with the thirty percent expansion issue uh, and some limited coverage, um, for, for lot coverage. And then when you get beyond the seventy-five feet, you no longer have to worry about the thirty percent expansion, but you do have to worry about your development coverage of non-vegetated surfaces.
And the resource, just, just from a global perspective, they're not talking about, I know there's none on this area, but they're not talking about streams, brooks, this would be, or what is applied?
Resource protection in coast, in, in, in the ocean, basically, the two, the two. You have a lot of wetland, marsh, wetland. So, but what we did, we negotiated with the DEP. We got the development coverage increased to thirty-five percent from twenty. Okay, and we were able to do that because we surveyed a number of properties and that came out to be about the average coverage of buildings, driveways, porches, decks, anything that wasn't growing, something, came out to thirty-five percent. Also the fact that we have, uh, public sewer and public storm drainage, all of those issues, and public water. So all of those issues combined to give us a much smaller lot size because typically the state requires forty thousand square feet for a residential lot in the shoreline zone. We don't typically, you know, anything like that. But we don't need it because we don't have to site a well and septic and, and all of that. So we were able to get them to agree. They haven't officially agreed, but they've agreed in, 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 uh, in, uh, theory to it. And so it's just a matter of reviewing the council's decision and, and all of that stuff, and they'll ratify that. So we're pretty happy about that because that was another thing that you guys were always coming up against was lot coverage, uh, issues.
And that supersedes the shoreline zoning ordinance?
That, we actually, actually had that made in the shoreline zone for these districts.
Okay, gotcha.
So that'll, you'll find that in our shoreline ordinance as well.
Okay, now if... Shoreline overlay?
Yes.
Now, if the shoreline, in the future, if the shoreline zone ordinance gets modified?
Only in Higgins Beach. Only in Higgins Beach, yeah.
If the shoreline zone ordinance gets modified for a different reason, will this ordinance automatically get updated to meet that requirement? In other words, you've got the requirement in this?
Yeah, that's right. If, if something were to dramatically change, which impacts what we've got in here, we do qual, we do kinda put a qualifier in here that you need to consult the shoreline ordinance.
Okay, there you go.
For all the details.
And if it gets more strict?
It says right here under A, this section is for reference only. Refer to chapter four oh five C, the shoreline zoning ordinance, for specific standards and requirements.
Yeah, that covers.
But, but we felt it was important to give them a snapshot because whenever I was talking to somebody doing a development project in Higgins Beach, I had to go through this litany of other agency or other regulations, not just Scarborough zoning and not just the building code, but now you gotta worry about sand dune. Are you in the front dune? Are you in the back dune? Are you in a, an erosion hazard area? Are you in the flood plain? Are you in shoreline over, you know? And on and on and on. So, so we tried to simplify it a little bit.
Yeah.
We did try to say everything here, but we tried to simplify. So A is shoreline overlay, B is flood plain. So we've got all the flood zones that you might fall into. And, and what those, how those impact your development? Most importantly, it's gonna be elevation.
Those are the newly updated ones?
No, there, there are no newly updated ones.
I thought they were changing.
We're still in limbo.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's gonna be a tough one.
It's gonna be two thousand seventeen at least before we have any...
But let's say that stuff does get updated. In order to update this, we just change it and then it has to go in front of the board again one more time to get through?
Yeah, because those ordinances would have to be amended at the same time we'd amend the...
Gotcha.
Do it lock stop.
Some of those changes I've seen look like they're gonna be pretty radical.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not talking about that tonight. And then sand dunes, uh, frontal dune, back dune, and erosion hazard area. Those are regulations we have absolutely no control over. The flood plain and the shoreline, we do. Those are ours to regulate. The dunes are DEPs to regulate. That's the Natural Resource Protection Act. So we say again, this section for reference only, refer to main DEP regulations for specific standards and requirements.
Are you coaching them through that when I, when I get there?
Yeah. Yeah, we are. And in fact, we're still talking with DEP because I'm not sure that I like how we've described some of these, especially under the coverage. I'm not happy with what they say. I've read their regs and I don't feel that we're reflecting exactly what the regs are saying. So I've sent this language to DEP and asked them if their staff could review it again. Consultants put a lot of this together. Quite frankly, they're dealing with things they don't have to deal with very often because two of them are from Massachusetts and this is a man thing. So, so, you know, I didn't, I didn't expect them to get it, you know, to, to hit it on the heart with it. So we're, we're fine tuning it as we speak. Um, and we'll probably do that as a policy thing. And we've got two or three other, well, probably a handful of other tweaks we need to make to this. So we'll probably gather those up and do it all at once.
How are we dealing with the Yabots?
The what?
The Yabots. Somebody comes in, says, uh, Yabot says right there.
Go talk to DEP.
Take a look at them.
Yeah.
So it's fire marshal. Call him and get us to the ice.
Then we have standards for all buildings. Um, and so that talks about how we measure height. Uh, so I'm, I'm just gonna invite you guys to, to look that over at your leisure rather than dwell on it. We, we cover building height. Uh, we can measure it in stories. We can measure it in feet. And in the shoreline, it's measured a little bit differently than we do out of the shoreline. We talk about ground... We talk about ground floor elevation and how that's identified. Uh, height exceptions such as roof mounted radio antennas, transmission equipment, that's exhaust, skylights, et cetera, et cetera. Um, features, pitched roofs must be symmetrically sloped in accordance with roof, roof pitch standards for building typing. Refers to a table, which I'll show you in a minute.
What does that mean?
Hmm?
Symmetrically sloped.
In other words, you, um, you wouldn't have one this way and one this way. They're, they're gonna be symmetrically sloped.
Two and a like that, uh, it's like, uh, salt, salt, Pakistan, is that what that means?
Uh, right. Um, with the exception of the bungalow type, which has a neat roof composition. So we've tried to identify those roofs that wouldn't typically be symmetrical, okay? Fenestration is the glass area or the open area in a wall.
What's the word?
Fenestration.
Every month you come up with a new word for us.
I just made that one.
Architect's word.
You don't assign, what's the month of July?
Um, and so we deal with that now. It's basically on the front facade of the building. Facade? You know that one?
I'm putting on the facade right now.
Story where I'm from, uh, we have the St. John Valley. You all heard of the St. John Valley? And up there, there was a guy that was running the CDVG block, Community Development Block Program. And they used to have a facade program where you could put funds aside for businesses to fix up the fronts of their businesses on Main Street.
Does that mean?
But he was, he was a little bit French and he, he called it the facari, the facari program. So every time I say that word, I'm thinking facari.
We're gonna get a complaint on that one.
Um, it's a soft. So here's the roof table, four point one A. So it lists all the different, did I skip one? No, okay, that's. Here's your, your different house types, coastal cottage, bungalow, house, in shop house, neighborhood. Different types of roofs over the top, gable hip, bungalow, gable shed, flat. And those are your roof pitch ranges, minimums and your maximums. So that's something we'll cover in that administrative review process. So we'll be expecting them to identify the roof pitches on their plans that they bring in. And we'll, it's another checklist item that we have to go over to see. And again, this goes to character. We're not trying to get into everybody's business, but, but if you didn't build them to these, these standards, they could be way out of character and create something that just didn't look in place down there.
And, and the character they're trying to appeal to still, the average person, give us a new word that we wouldn't know. What, what is the character of the word? Village? Is it, is it, is it a village style? Is it a traditional, um, sea coast?
It's a sea coast community, yeah, sea coast village. I, I, I don't really know what the, how you quantify it. It's kinda talking about.
What they're trying to do is they're trying to keep the image of how the community was originally built. All the cottages, if you look at most of the streets, all the cottages are ten or twelve feet off the street and they're all tilted just a bit and everybody's got a view of the roof. So that's what they were trying to do. They wanted to keep this.
And they actually did a good job. They did a good job too at, in, in kind of identifying what those ranges for the, the different pitches. I mean, they didn't just pull the stuff out, out of the air. We looked at what was down there. They qualified it, quantified it and they, they created ranges. So anybody that says, oh, it's too restrictive, well, you've gotta, listen, for, for a coastal cottage, you can go from a nine twelve to a fourteen twelve roof.
It's quite a range.
It's quite a range. If you know, if you know what you're talking about and you're talking about roof pitch, it's quite a range. So, I mean, it's not saying you gotta have just a nine twelve.
Right.
You know, it's giving you some, some leeway to do different things for different kinds of roofs. And then we have roofs by components. So, so we talked about the principal building, the box that goes first on your lot. Then we have components. Components include projecting porch, integral porch, engaged porch, and I can see we got a spelling typo there, and a gauged porch. Balcony, bay window, dormer window, cross gable, roof walk, retail awning, canopy stoop, deck, rear addition, side addition, estate addition. Further on, it describes all of those different components a little bit more for you. But those all have roofs as well, or most of them do. And, and so there's a roof pitch range for each of those as well.
When would the retail awning come into play down there?
Retail awning would be on those commercial buildings like Ian.
Just the ones that are kinda grandfathered? I can't imagine someone's gonna build another retail facility down there.
Well, I mean, you have to, you have to give them the ability to improve their properties just like the residential people do. So we wanted to also have some character components for them. And so in the next table, it's sort of a summary table, Table four two A, it shows you what a coastal cottage might look like. This is just an example. It's not the only way it can look, but it gives you some examples, coastal cottage, bungalow, house, et cetera, et cetera. And then we look at the accessory building types, the one-story outbuilding, which could be a garage or the one-story carriage house, could be a garage or a shed. The one-story carriage house could be a garage with an apartment over the top of it tucked into the, the upper story. Or it could just simply be a second cottage for those properties that have, already have that, okay?
So this is still allowing for.
It's still allowing for an accessory.
Accessory unit?
Yeah, yeah.
Even with those lots, that as well?
Yeah, but it, keep in mind and remember that DEP didn't sign off on accessory units in the shoreline zone. So it would only be available to those, those folks that are outside the shoreline zone. Unless they already had it to, to family. Um, then we go into Article four with the building standards and types and standards. You can see here, um, we have labeled these dimensions, A, B, C, and D. So when you go down into the table and you wanna know what building width is, it's shown here, A. So A is eighteen feet maximum on the coastal cottage. So when you stop and think about it, you can be eight feet from the property line, then you can be eighteen feet. So now you've only taken up, uh, twenty-six feet. Twenty-six feet if you're relatively close to fifty-foot wide lot. So it still leaves you some room to do some things. But it also says that you can't be any bigger than eighteen feet with a coastal cottage. So you talked about, uh, I think Ed was mentioning, or somebody was asking, is it interactive? Do, do, do they have the ability to make their decisions? First thing they're gonna decide is what kind of house are they building? Is it a coastal cottage? Does it meet these dimensions? If not, then it goes to the next one. You know, and so.
I thought it was like module homes.
It, it kinda is. It's putting Lego blocks together.
Yeah.
Um, so, so anyway, I'll just encourage you to look down through those. It talks about story heights there, uh, the number of stories, the maximum number of stories for that style of building, okay? And the amount of fenestration, the percent of fenestration they can have in the ground story and the upper story as a percentage of the overall total wall area. And then we also talk about frontages and yards. And the reason that's important is you, you probably remember there are a few properties down there that have pavement right in the front of their building. Looks like the street just continues right into the front of the building and they park their cars in front of the building. We want parking and driveways to be to the side of the building so that the fronts of the building that we bring, the closer to the street, looks like old time Main Street with the porches. And you don't see automobiles until you get by the house and they're tucked in nicely to the side and behind. We even encourage shared driveways with a little bit of a divider, you know, to kinda break that. So, I mean, there's a number of different ways to, to skim that cat, if you will. But we're definitely not going to be approving front parking right on, right on the street or right off the street immediately in front of the house. We'll get into that a little bit more later. So here's some example of what a coastal cottage could look like with some components added. So you see the main box, I didn't bring my pointer, but, um, the main box is in the center and then this has a wraparound porch. The one on the lot above it has some side wings on it that come off. So there's, talk about, you know, not, it's not cookie cutter. But one thing that Ed and I were talking about before the meeting was, you gotta understand that when you, um, yeah, where, where'd I find that, Ed? Yeah, there it is. When you look at the components and under the standards, it says, a minimum of two components must be applied to the base building massing, including a porch as required under the residential yard frontage standards. Every new house has to have a porch. Every new, every new house of that style. And I think that's pretty consistent through all of the styles.
What about the ones that have to be lifted up? What about the ones like we had a few weeks ago that have to be lifted up?
Porches can be lifted up too. But you gotta, you gotta understand, it needs to look like this, but it doesn't have to function as a porch. It can be open to the inside of the structure. But what it does is it prevents two-story encroachments up to eight feet from the property.
And, and the porch is the part that allows it to go to eight feet?
The porch is what allows it to go to eighteen, eight feet. You got eighteen at the house, you can, and, and your porch dimensions have to be a minimum of six and a maximum of ten, so you can be as close as eight feet.
Now, the porch can be enclosed.
It can be enclosed.
Lasted in.
It can be open.
Can they have?
It can be partially enclosed and partially open. Can what?
Can they have heat if it's lasted in?
It can be an extension of another room in there.
Okay. But you also have to meet the fenestration requirements too. So you, you're not gonna see something that looks like a porch with no windows in it. Can you imagine how bad that would look?
Right.
You know, so it's gotta look like a porch.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know.
Fenestration. Yeah, so, so even though it doesn't have that.
That's good.
That back wall.
It's cold.
Even though it doesn't have that back wall, it doesn't have to have that back wall. It can, it can be your classic open front porch.
Right.
But it could also be an additional living area.
This example here, the, which one, I've got here, the coastal cottage one. That's eight feet, but the steps are actually closer than eight feet, is that correct?
We'll get to that.
Kinda keep moving along.
Yeah.
Just blowing us up.
So we, we've got that for each, each house. I'm not gonna dwell on each one. So I just want you to be familiar with what the components are and what they do. So we have different setbacks for components and we even have different setbacks for steps and stoops, as Mark just pointed out. And so we deal with all of that.
That's because of the stoop.
Your stoop. I'm just gonna breeze through these house types and just quickly hit on the, uh, components. Cause right after we get through the base buildings, here's your shop house. That's what a shop house looks like there.
Pretty shop.
Shop. Shop.
Neighborhood store.
What makes that a shop house compared to the, the one that's a house?
Read, read the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Oh, it's the fenestration. I get it.
You stoop.
Second emotion.
Accessory buildings, and you can see the placement of the accessory building deep into the corner and back of the lot. One-story carriage house. And then we do have a, uh, where do we get in here? Building components.
On the accessory units, the four feet, is it four feet you said? Three feet? How many feet from, on the accessory? Is it from the eve?
It's gonna be from the closest part of the structure.
So, I just like the, I'll just go right along.
Here's the projecting porch.
Go zone.
Okay, so here's your depth, dimensions, height, dimensions, permitted encroachment. It can go into ten feet into the setback. So you have your main house is at eighteen feet, let's say. Your porch can encroach ten feet into that setback. That puts it eight feet from the property. Took me the longest time to get a handle on that. Encroachment.
And then that doesn't include the stairs?
It doesn't include the stairs. Cause you can see, uh, encroachment, uh, no, I'm, I apologize. I was thinking. We got the letters mixed up because height is, height should be B on the drawing and it's C, so that's all screwed.
With the flood plain elevation issues that we have, what would you predict would be the maximum number of steps off the front? I mean, it wouldn't be something like ten, would it? Who would have a building structure that would be that high?
Well, there, I mean, there, there are a number of different ways to deal with that if you have a super elevated structure due to flood plain.
Yeah.
The stairs get, I mean, generally speaking, a lot of people will put the stairs underneath the house and going into the house from underneath where it's posted, piers, pilings. You actually be high enough that you'll, you'll enter underneath the house or the stairwell will be built into that area. So that you don't have to get out into the street with your staffs.
So for instance, on this one here, that's using the example of four steps. That would typically be a landing style, wouldn't it, at four steps?
For, for a bulk of the properties, that, that's probably gonna be adequate to get into your house.
Can they have, can they have a four-foot, a four-foot landing?
Let me get to it. Let me get to it.
Sorry.
Stop pushing me.
Thanks for moving us along.
Is that the best I can get this?
I know. He's been breaking the whole time.
So here's a bunch of different porches.
We won't lose them again.
We deal with that. We deal with bay windows. We deal with balconies. We deal with dormers. And that's, that is an example of A, you can see the gable end setback, four feet minimum, okay? And B is the ridge line setback, so it has to be dropped down from the ridge line and can't connect to the same, uh, peak, okay? However, a cross gable can connect at the peak. It's a little different than a dormer. And that's what a cross gable would, would look like and it deals with that and with maximum width, uh, et cetera. Roof walk, which you do see a few of those down in Higgins. There's your awning. And, and see, notice over here into the dimensions, we have permitted encroachments for each one of those different types of.
Now, for instance, an awning like, I use my, my cottage for example, we have a roll-up awning that comes out over the deck. Can they bring that awning if it's like, you know, one of those remote control ones? Can that go out into the eight-foot area or does it have to stay back? So they, they sell their grass, right? Can they have one of those electronic?
It's permitted to encroach six feet.
So they could go up to six feet?
No, they can encroach into the setback six feet.
So there's two, two feet.
I'd have to check that because I'm not sure if you're allowed to have an awning off the front porch. So you'd already be at eight feet with your front porch maybe. So I don't know that you can go. If, if you're only allowed to encroach six feet into the setback, I don't think that's gonna work. So this would be more for a house, maybe a side of a house, you know?
They're not talking about the type that I'm thinking of. Probably, they're, they're probably thinking permanent awning.
No, it says where possible awning should be retractable. Read your ordinance, Mark. Canopy, uh, canopy is a little bit different than an awning. That's your canopy. That's a typical canopy. There's probably different ways you can do it. You can post it. Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be, have the knees. It can actually be posted to the ground, supported with posts. Here's your stoop. Minimum landing width of four feet, minimum landing depth of four feet, permitted encroachment, four feet. And because, because stairs, uh, stairs may be recessed into the building facade. Stairs are not permitted to encroach onto any abutting sidewalk, so that's kinda your limit. Stairs may be built perpendicular or parallel to the building facade, but must lead directly to the ground level or an abutting side.
What is the maximum encroachment on the front for steps and a stoop?
Sixty?
Up, up to the sidewalk.
Right now it's up to the side. What if it doesn't have a sidewalk?
Well, um, steps.
My thought, my thought is you've got a porch that gets you to eight feet. And then you've got a stoop and steps and that gets you right on the road.
I think we say that in no instance can it be any closer than two feet to the property line.
Okay.
But it's not.
That makes sense.
It's not saying it there, but I think we say it somewhere else.
And the property line is usually inside of the road edge, right?
Well, yeah, your right-of-way line and your property line should be one and the same.
Right.
But what about with the, with sidewalks? Sidewalk is.
Well, again, if the sidewalk, if the sidewalk isn't on your property, then you really can't have.
Just cause I don't, I'm not familiar with the roads down there.
I don't, I don't wanna get too, again, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds. You've got everything under the sun down there.
There's virtually no sidewalks down there.
Well, there is on Ocean Ave. That's about the only one.
Yeah, right.
And on Baby.
And on Baby.
That's it.
We have rear additions. Notice that rear additions do have to be set back from the main walls of the house so it doesn't just look like an extension of the, the main wall. It has a different look to it. Estate wings are large, uh, T-shaped additions. And then we talk about foundations. So we do get into the types of foundations that you will be seeing down there and the height standards for those. And then we talk about foundations, so we do get into the types of foundations that you will be seeing down there and the height standards for those. Different kinds of materials and different kind of configuration depending on the heights that they have to be by the regulatory agency that controls that. Piers, pilings, hydraulic foundations, which are basically just walls with hydraulic openings, so the water and sand can come in and out. So we try to deal with all of that sort of stuff and how that all looks. And then the frontage, which I mentioned earlier. This is the frontage, and in the frontage you can't have parking, okay? You see these shaded areas?
You can't have a driveway that goes through it on the side.
Along the side, yeah, so you can see a driveway that goes up the side.
They're saying they can't park their car?
They can't park there.
With that, so you'll give that to them. And then some of you want to. How do you manage that?
What's that?
If I'm looking at section one residential yard, or four, one.
Okay. That. Off-street parking may not be located, it's number two, I, I. Off-street parking may not be located in the residential yard and shall be situated behind the minimum front setback. So you have a driveway, you see in this picture you've got kind of a shared driveway, it's a side-by-side driveway. You're supposed to park back behind that shaded area. That shaded area is representative of that setback to that porch, okay?
Is this a design guideline or enforcement guideline?
How do you enforce that?
You're supposed to prebevel to provide for it. Are we gonna enforce it? Hell no, I don't have time to do what I'm supposed to do now. But thanks for putting it out there on TV so everybody knows.
Are they gonna be parking meters?
We'll deal with parking meters. Residential parking.
You could've answered it to design guideline.
The main, yeah. I jumped, I jumped at that, uh, yeah, it's, you guess, when we're reviewing these, you've got to show that you're providing for it. I mean, obviously, if you've got your traffic plug full of cars already.
And if they had a fence line that was up to the front of the, or the edge of the porch.
I mean, obviously, we're not going to be placing that twenty-four seven. It's, it's something that we're going to try to make sure.
It'll give us something to do, since we won't have any, any more business to do on our.
Don't even worry.
We can go around all the way along.
Now, there is an exception, there is an exception to that, and that's what we call the beachfront garage court. Those are the properties that have beachfront on one side, so they're, they're, the back of their building is actually the street front. And so, they have to park somewhere, so we do allow it in those, in those cases. But you're not, you're only gonna find that along Shipwreck and Bayview maybe and a couple of places. Maybe it's another street that has those, those kinds of properties. So it's not very prevalent, but we do have it allowed for it.
And we need badges. I've been trying to get a shirt for the last twenty years.
What's that?
A shirt. We need.
Only enforcement shirt. You're only enforcement team.
So, I've already spent probably more time than I wanted to just going through the ordinance, but again, I encourage you to read through it and, and find more time. So, so let's get back to what, how is this gonna impact the way that you guys do your business? Mark already mentioned, one, one good question that I, I don't have an answer for is, are we gonna be seeing limited reduction of yard accessory? All I can say is possibly, because we haven't prohibited them yet for Higgins Beach. I don't even know if we would. I think we probably could. But I think we may just let this ride for a year and see what happens. But, but consider this, you guys are reviewing the standards, which I don't have right in front of me, they're in the book, but I think in there somewhere, the applicant is supposed to sort of demonstrate a need. For the, even though it's fairly simple, they still have to demonstrate a need.
They would have a very hard time finding a leg to stand on.
That's what I'm saying, so I, I think it's gonna, it's a problem that'll take care of itself.
Yeah, my guess is you'll be discouraging them if they decide to come before us, then it's like, really?
And, and Mark brought up a point a few, a few months ago, or maybe, I don't know, sometimes recent passes. Why, why are we hearing variances that maybe really don't stand a chance? And my answer, in other words, why am I letting them through, you know? I don't, I don't.
They still have the right.
Why can't you do your job?
They still have the right.
That was the one o'clock meeting. And the answer is, everybody has a right to appeal. I, I do my due diligence and tell them what I think their cha, I, I mean, I don't tell them what their chances are, but I explain what the, the problems.
Is there a history of, of that experience?
Yeah, and, and, you know, based on, based on my interpretation of the ordinance, you don't meet the hardship criteria. However, you are free to make your best case and let the board of, of your peers determine that. It's not my job. But I, I, I have, in past times, tried very hard to discourage people, but I cannot say, don't apply. That's not my call. So, but anyway, getting off track. So a little introduction, I think will take care of itself. I think, I think where you're gonna, I asked Dan tonight before the meeting, I said, to Dan Bacon, I said, what about the person that comes in and says, listen, I wanna put a house here, I wanna put a house at eighteen feet from the front property line, I don't want a porch. Is that an appealable thing? Because generally variance appeals are for space and bulk type things, or area. This is a design component.
Right.
It's not really a, a dimensional thing.
It's character-based.
It's character-based. I don't have an answer, he didn't have an answer, he says, you know, I don't know.
I would say based on what you just, the way you've talked, I would say they would have to have a porch-style face.
By setting this up, you're trying to assist the people that are building to develop the character that's supposed to be in that area. How does it meet the character criteria if it doesn't have a porch? That's why you put it in the ordinance.
That's the whole, that's the whole question.
Again, it'd be a difficult one.
Is it a variant?
But it'd be a difficult one for us to, in my opinion, to say, don't put a porch in, it's got the same character as everybody else. Right, no, it does not have the same character.
I think you may have answered it right there. Because again, they have to come to the board with their application for appeal and they have to prove something to you. They have to demonstrate something. If it's hardship, that's what they have to demonstrate, if it's practical difficulty, that's what they have to demonstrate. So I think your question is gonna be, why can't you put a porch in?
Right.
That may be a hard question.
Or a porch-like component.
Right, right.
Because it's getting a lot, basically it's saying that they want, they want step-ups.
That's, that's what it's getting to.
Really what it comes down to.
But I, listen, people want what they want, and, and I guarantee, there's somebody out there.
Right.
That doesn't want a porch.
They're already designing something.
That's, that's why if you look at the, the glass on the face, it's limited because modern design would put all glass on that front face.
You can pretty much do that.
You can't, because it's limited to fifteen and twenty percent.
Well, no, it's not the minimum though. It's a minimum, you could, you could.
You could put a hundred percent? Wow. And still have.
That's why I would get kicked off the board, man.
Boy, this is a hard night.
I can take it though.
We thought it was gonna be a news.
I'll be laughing next meeting.
So I'm sure there'll be another meeting.
I'm gonna come out.
So, so special exceptions, when would we see a special exception down there?
Um, special exceptions are generally for uses. So, for the home occupation is one that you commonly see. So I don't think special exception.
That won't change.
The only time that might come into play is remember if it's a, if it's a, I don't know, how many non-conforming uses there are down there. Really, when you stop thinking of it, it's primarily residential, I don't know that anybody has a, an auto body shop in Little Higgins Beach. And so it's probably not likely, but remember, if it is a non-conforming use and they want to.
Well, the apartment, the apartment building is about the only one.
Maybe, yeah, that might be the, the example. But if they wanna change that to another non-conforming use, it's a miscellaneous appeal and you review that using the special exception criteria.
Well, uh, taking a home and splitting it up into condos, would that be a non-conforming use?
That's, that's a form of ownership, but again, it's, it's different. It's a good question, and, and boy, I'm not the right guy to talk to about that.
I think it has to have a, it would have to be a legal two-family to be able to split it, I believe.
Okay.
Because you can't, an accessory unit.
You couldn't take a single family and make it.
The apartment building again could be, yeah, that could be one, but yeah, I think generally, Rick, you're not gonna see that too much down there. There may be a few two-families where you could do that. I know it's been done at Pine Point.
Well, you're making the condo hotels, but I don't think you're gonna see that down there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the little town doesn't want them down there. I mean, they don't want an illegal location.
So, getting back to what are you guys likely to see now that this is in place? You're not gonna, definitely not gonna see as many variance appeals for setbacks, because we've dealt with that. But where you might see a few is somebody who has an existing home that's, let's say they don't, they're not, they have an existing home that doesn't have a porch. And it's fifteen feet from the front property line. So it doesn't meet the eighteen-foot minimum or the twenty-one-foot maximum, and yet they would like to put a front porch on, bringing them.
Or they wanna go up.
Right. Or they wanna go up. But, but even if they wanna put a front porch on, for example, they, they might, that might be a case where you'd have to come, and I think, it comes to the board. And I think that might be an instance where, again, it's a design component, but it also involves the setback. So that may be an appealable thing.
Yeah, does that force them, if they, if they wanted to go up, does it force them to have to put a porch on?
If they had a single-story structure fifteen feet from the, from the front property line and they wanted to put a second story on, I don't think now they would be able to do that.
They'd have to, they'd have to.
Just like now, if you wanna put a second story on, you'd have to go back to the front setback and then go up? Or come to the board for a variance. So, yeah, they, they technically could come to the board for a variance for that. But, again, I don't know that that would, I don't know that you're gonna see that many of those, because the, the buildings that are closer than that to the front property line, most of those already have like a front porch of some kind or a one-story element on there. And that's why we, that's how we came up with that kinda character-based.
This is a little into town and, and.
Right, it gives them flexibility. Adding an accessory unit without touching the existing main structure? Do they still have that three-foot setback on the back property line?
Of the garage?
Right.
If it's an accessory unit?
Yeah.
I can still, let it still inherently if the garage is first.
We're not talking about what the use of that building is.
Gotcha, gotcha.
We're talking about the dimensional requirements that that building has to meet. So it can't look like two big houses on the lot, it's gonna be a smaller.
Story and a half, whatever you wanna call it, yeah.
They're probably not gonna be as large as what some people, I mean, right now, I think our accessory unit would allow like a seven-hundred-and-fifty square foot.
I think a two-thousand, you bet.
Well, no, it's still seven-fifty up until, based on the primary drawing square footage. You're not gonna get that now, because of the building size.
Right, they can still attach, they can still do separate.
But it's, here's the thing, you're living at the beach, guys. You're not living out on the Homes Road or the Beechers Road. This is the beach, it's different. So, it may be smaller, but you have to live a little smaller, because everything's a little smaller at the beach, and people have to get used to that. So I, I think.
It's a chosen style of life. You don't wanna live there, don't live there. If you don't wanna live in New York City, don't live in.
Well, Mark, that's fine for you smaller people, but us bigger people.
You do need wider.
There's one thing you have to understand, and that's, the majority of the homes down there are rental properties. People buy them and maybe they're there two, three, four weeks a year, the rest of the time they're in it.
And that's true, but I'm seeing more.
They're, they're gonna want something that's, that they can rent.
Maximize.
And get the most out of it.
But that, I don't know if it's changed, slowly changing, or if it's, we're just seeing a few more. The people that I've talked to lately that have come in for projects, they want to live there year-round. They may own property there now and, and only use it a few weeks out of the year, but their plan is to be year-round residents. And then, and the other faction I'm seeing more and more of is people who wanna buy and live there year-round, that never had a history there. So, I don't know if it's, if it's like changing.
I think it is. The last five appeals we've had have been all that they wanna live there, they don't wanna.
That if that trend is going to, if that's slowly gonna migrate to.
It's the bay doors.
I can tell you everywhere else where I'm from, up north, on the lakes, that's what's happening. They're always being bugged. Now, yeah, everybody's just building nice, big homes, multiple families with you. So I, I can't, I can't, I wouldn't doubt that the same thing would be happening at the beach. To what extent, I'm not sure. But I think, I think the bottom line is, this is gonna reduce a great deal of the, the load that you guys have historically carried at the zoning board. And not only that, I know that in many cases, you, you've been faced with some very tough cases where, gee, it made sense for them to do what they're asking to do, but we're up against it, you can't prove hardship. It can't happen. I think some of those now could happen. They just have to, you know, we, we dealt with, one of the.
If you got that one to work, you need something to work.
You know what I'm saying? The toughest designer I know of, who's very stuck on, on his designs, and he's done a lot of them, and he found a way to make this work. When, he said right from day one, there's no way this will work. And yet we just kept challenging and challenging him, and he did it.
I think a lot of these houses look just like the stuff he does.
Right. And he was a good designer.
He's a very good designer.
But it's, it's, it's a whole, it's, it's a whole change in the paradigm for him. Cause it's just a different way of trying to, he's, he's got his way, and now he's gotta make that conform to this. Nobody wants, nobody likes change immediately. But I'll, I guarantee you, after about five or six of these, he'll have it down.
Oh, yeah.
He'll have it down. So, it.
The only person that likes change is the one doing it, somebody.
The only other thing that we're working on, and I don't have a, I don't have any news to report on it yet, is, remember we, we keep running into this situation where people have to elevate, because they're, they're tearing down and rebuilding, and now they have to elevate to be flood compliant, and it, or, or they're adding to, or they just wanna put a foundation under their house, and they have to elevate. And according to our ordinance, that's an increase in the non-conformance for some structures. So we're trying to, we're gonna be meeting with Phil Sossier next week to try to come up with proposed language for an amendment to the ordinance that will eliminate that from having to come to the board for a variance. To do what one code says you have to do.
Right.
It's requirement.
Yeah, it's required to hear, and we're saying you can't do something there.
You have to do.
Right. That, to me, has no business coming to the board for a variance. You're either going to meet those regulations or you're not. And it shouldn't be that you have to ask the board permission to do what one ordinance says you have to do. So, we're, we're working on that, hopefully we'll have that changed for you too.
Uh, are you looking at any other areas of the town where you may apply similar ordinance to this in, say?
We've had questions. I think the council was even asked during the public hearing phase if we were gonna do this for Pine Point. And the short answer is not right away.
There are lots of totally different though.
It, it's, it's, it's very, in my mind, it's very different. And I don't know if you have the same sense, Ed, being in Higgins Beach and looking at Pine Point, but.
The lot sizes appear to be quite different in size.
Very different.
But I think, it seems to me if we use the same process, where you get the name.
I, I believe in the process, yeah.
They, they need, they need the same thing done down there. It's just that they're gonna have different, more different residential areas.
Right, right.
At Higgins Beach, Higgins Beach has one.
What's next, Kenny?
I, I can't see it ever, ever happening in a process, to be honest with you. I just don't see it.
There's really not a lot up there.
The stuff that's out there is old. I mean, it's beautiful homes, there's some really.
They're, yeah. I, I just.
Weird area.
I don't, I would never say never, I just don't think it's a priority.
Right.
At this point. I know we've had a lot of variances out of, perhaps a lot of variance requests because of odd shaped lots and. And other things, and, but even worse than Pine Point, there's no sort of standard lot size, well, I shouldn't say that. There sorta is in certain sections, some standard lot sizes, it's a very old, hundred-year-old subdivision.
It, it, there's that, the, the blocks.
Yeah, I just don't know. It's been so bastardized up to this point, so many different combinations of those lots, that it's very hard to sort of pick a, a standard lot out there now.
We don't seem to get as many appeals there as we do at Pine.
They get more to work with than.
I figured out to handle it.
So, yeah, we'll take them one at a time, I, I, I think we would be probably doing this process, it wasn't cheap to do.
I was gonna ask you, what, does it cost?
I don't, I don't have a final figure. Dan wouldn't share it with me.
He would.
I think so too.
I guess you're right.
But it was, you know, I, it was worth it, don't get me wrong. It was expensive, but I think it was worth it, and it was the right process to do. If we'd have tried to done, have done this in else, we probably would've butchered it badly.
The process was well-done, from what I observed.
Yeah.
If you picked up three lots in taxes, you probably kept the cost.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
The good part about it is, it gives the owners a chance to improve the quality of their property and the value in their property.
Yeah.
It increases the tax base at the same time. So I think both the town and the owners benefit, and it gives them flexibility that they didn't have before, a likelihood, more likelihood to pass when it comes in front of us, because it's much clearer, so-
Probably not gonna affect schools.
Right.
It's all the way around, it's good.
Yeah. It won't be a win for everybody, but, you know, I think it's a, it's gotta be a 75% improvement out there. 75% of the property moves with that.
Just the sheer fact that the people had an opportunity to voice their opinion as to what they wanted for their community. You know, they've basically been asking for that for years and years, having to go before the zoning board to-
Make any change at all.
To make changes, and, you know, the current zoning was just prohibited.
You could take credit for that.
Huh?
You could take credit for that. You left the zoning board to go solve problems, the council, pay you back, the zoning board to come up with it. Take the flag in the sand.
There you go.
But the people, the people really appreciated the opportunity to do that.
It was fun.
To contribute.
I enjoyed it. I've been a part of a lot of these public coming-together type things to, to try to solve problems. I've never seen as good attendance as we had at Higgins Beach, I've never seen the participation, um, enthusiasm.
No pitchforks?
Well, no, no, there was, there was, there were, there were some, there were some contested, heated arguments and discussions happening, that's good, that's part of the process. But just to have the involvement that, that we had, I think was, was the key. Wasn't everybody, no, but it was a really good representation of, of the entire Higgins Beach community there.
But I never got the feeling, from what little I saw, that it became personal.
No. It was- No, it was very, it was, it was very well-done. Uh, people, people had passion for their, whatever their issue was, and that's fine, that's great.
Yeah.
And, but for the most part, with the exception of maybe, I don't know, you know, one or two, um, everything was conducted very civilly, it was very productive, it was very positive, in trying to find the answers to the world of everybody.
Is it model for other towns? Are, are you gonna, are you going to package that for me, is? Have you thought about it?
It's not our process, it's the, uh, the design team that did it. We were just, we were just the staff.
Yeah.
But, uh, no, it's, it's, it's good. Um, so anyway, that's, I think, I think it's a good time to wrap it up for tonight. Um, I'm happy to do this again as things evolve, and maybe I have more answers than questions the next time. Uh, certainly can give you briefings at any, any of the future zoning meetings, at this thing.
You always do a good job with these.
Yeah, they're helpful.
So we'll, we'll kinda be watching to see what, what impact this has on the business that you guys have come before you.
Yeah.
I can't, I gotta say, I don't see any variances coming for us. I don't see any limited reductions.
And the ones that do become-
Not there.
Yeah. Remember, we still got Pine Point.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's what it'll do.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you look at the volume that was coming across the board's plate, I would say it's probably 50% in that area.
Or at least.
I think you're right, I think it's about 50%.
Yeah.
I, I actually tried to tally that up, um, I think it was last year, and that's just about what it came to. It was about half, half of the appeals were in one of the beach communities.
Just to be clear, as I say, how many of the, the ones that we have done, and I know this is kind of conjecture, that we've approved matched this style, this function? In other words, you said 50% of the stuff that we had approved in the last 10 years down there, when it was built, matches this?
Would've met this?
Yeah.
Well, I, I would say there's certainly a fair percentage, I don't know what that percentage would be, but when you stop and think of it, for the most part, when people come in and ask for a variance, it's basically to put back what they have. Very seldom is it to expand to something more. It's more often they're tearing it down and they'd like to put it right back, because they've enjoyed their backyard where it is, their neighbors enjoyed their backyard where it is, and they were actually trying to come and say, don't make me push this back into the middle of my lot, where it's never been, and so-
Which we did.
We came up with these setback distances based on kind of the average of where buildings fell on the lot. So I'm gonna say that, yeah, a high percentage, I don't know how high, but certainly a, a high percentage of them probably would've met or come very close to meeting this. The, the design elements, not so much. You know, the components, how they're-
Yeah, there's some funky houses.
I mean, you know, there's, there's a few designers that had, had their certain things that they liked to do. One of the, one of the things we're debating right now is, you've seen them before, where most of these sketches that I've shown you here that are examples in the ordinance are very simple A-frame, or not A-frame, but gable-type roofs, or whatever symmetric hall, not multiple ridge lines or eve lines, you know, not a lot of step downs and pull outs, but, and you know what I'm talking about, because you've seen a number of those. I'm not gonna mention any of these, but there's a, a lot of houses that are designed that way, because it's interesting.
New Jersey look.
It's, it's interesting.